Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone back and for those that just walked in, welcome to our regular business meeting for June 13th, 2023. And we've already done the introductions and done the pledge, so we will go right into our first item, which is the adoption of the agenda, approval of the consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion.
Ms. DeWitt, I'd like to move that we adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda. It's action 23-06-84.
Can I have a second?
No, seconded.
Thank you. It was moved by Member Keough, seconded by Member McCoyn. Dr. Merritt, would you please walk us through?
Yes, thank you, Secretary Sedu. This evening, our consent agenda consists of human resources transactions since our last time together. We have new hires for your consideration as well as leaves, resignations, and retirements. We also have tenure recommendations this evening. We have layoffs for your consideration. These are for our healthcare technicians. In addition, we have the approval of the minutes from the following meeting: the regular meeting minutes from May the 23rd, the special meeting minutes from May 23rd, the special meeting minutes from May 31st, and the special meeting minutes from June the 7th. In the area of policies, we have the following policies for your consideration as a first reading: policy 1615, 3215, and 4215. This is the use of tobacco. We've combined these for administrators, professional staff, and support staff. We have policy 5111, which is the eligibility of resident, non-resident students, and policy 5112, which is use of tobacco by student. Also this evening for your consideration, we have an out-of-country field trip that has been reviewed through our SPA committee. And finally, we have the following action items as first and final weeks as a part of the consent agenda. The first is the consideration of approval of a resolution for the Michigan High School Athletics Association. This is our membership for our district for the school year 8-123 to 7-3124, and that is an annual consideration, annual resolution. We also have for your consideration this evening, the resolution for the cooperative agreement. This is our program between Wayne Westland Community Schools and the Plymouth Canton Community School Districts. This will be for the 23-24 school year that will allow our students to take courses or continue to take courses under this agreement at Wayne Westland Schools. And finally, this evening, we have the consideration of the approval of a tentative agreement with our Plymouth Canton Extended Day Association and with our PCEDA Association. This tentative agreement has been ratified by their union, so it is here for your consideration this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Merritt. All in favor, you say yes?
Yes.
Okay. Any opposed, please say no. Okay, votes in passes, five zero. And that is for action item number 23-06-84. We are now moving on to... Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Liz. Please move through the retirees and new hires.
So, good evening, everyone. I have the honor this evening of welcoming some new staff members to our school district and also welcoming some people back. So first, I would like to introduce you to Caitlin Kowalski. Caitlin, can you stand up? So Caitlin will be working at Salem High School as a resource room teacher. Congratulations, Caitlin. We're so thankful you selected Plymouth Canton Community Schools. And when I'm all done, I have a candy bar for you. Also, I would like to share with you that Sarah Richards... Sarah, you could stand up. Sarah is being recommended for the PCCS registrar position, which is part of Mr. Tiskowitz's department. Sarah was currently working with us in registration out of Plymouth High School, but now she is going to be the registrar. So congratulations, Sarah, on this new position. Okay, next. So next, I would like to welcome back Kayla Bola. Hi, Kayla. She is being recommended for the Technology Integration Specialist Position. So congratulations and welcome back. So I would like to share with you the retirements of six teachers in our school district, and I'd like to thank all of them for their service in their district and their commitment to our students. Noreen Ice, Resource Room Teacher at Plymouth. Martha Farmer, Music Teacher Band at West. Anne Nora Harami, Plymouth High School Sociology Teacher. Leo McManaman, Tobin School Classroom Teacher. Scott Marzadzuski, Elementary Teacher at Byrd. Cynthia Roschut is a math teacher at Salem High School. So congratulations on your retirement. The next piece of this for our agenda is we have eight teachers that are receiving tenure in our school district. Once a teacher has completed five successful years of teaching, they receive tenure. And so I would like to share with you what their building administrator has shared about them. First of all, Christopher Florowski is receiving tenure. He is a math teacher at Salem High School, and here's what Kim Valerosa would like to share. Chris has done an amazing job in his time with us at Salem. Chris embraces the math department philosophy of engaging lessons centered around visible learning and student voice in the classroom. Chris has demonstrated diverse talents as an instructor while working with both our multilingual math students and students in math support. In addition to his tremendous instructional pedagogy, Chris is a great person that takes a student-centered approach in all aspects of his work. Congratulations, Chris. Next, we have Heidi Bellinger, who is a teacher at Byrd School, and she will be receiving tenure this evening. And here's what George Hill would like to share about Heidi. Heidi Bellinger joined the Byrd team in the 21-22 school year. Heidi is a part of our first grade team. We are so happy to have her on staff, facilitating a love of learning for our Thunderbirds. It is my pleasure to recommend her for tenure with the Plymouth Canton Community School District. Next, we have Lindsay James, who is a teacher at Erickson Elementary School. And Kevin Lernett, the principal, has shared the following. Lindsay James has been a great addition to the Erickson staff. She demonstrates a willingness to meet children where they are and jumps in to support students with little English to get them acclimated to school in America. She seeks out resources for students and family and fully recognizes that her support is just as much emotional as it is academic. Lindsay identifies students' skills and needs and effectively target goals to help children grow in small groups and throughout the school. She gets children talking and making friends. Lindsay continuously demonstrates her high value at Erickson, and the staff, students, and parents appreciate her. Next, we have Nora Kay, another teacher at Erickson School. And again, Kevin Lernett has shared the following regarding Nora. Nora Kay is a kind, hard-working educator who advocates fiercely for her students. Whatever her students need, she does not rest until they have it. Whether that is a translator, an accommodation that allows greater access to the curriculum, or basic food or clothing, there are no lengths she will not go to to help. Nora provides strong instruction to her English language students in a manner that honors their individual language development. She demonstrates the terrific ability to work with small groups of students to support their learning. Nora is a wonderful team player. Classroom teachers have come to depend on her expertise to support them as they plan for their shared EL students. Nora is an integral part of the Erickson School community. It is my pleasure to give Nora her highest recommendation for tenure. Next, Matthew Sexton, Social Studies Teacher at Plymouth High School. And here's what Sherry Steckel, the principal of Plymouth, would like to share regarding Matthew. Matthew spent the last five years of his teaching career at Plymouth High School as an instructor in the Social Studies Department. Matthew brings an innovative, hands-on approach to his classes. Student agency is evident in the assignments and overall classroom community. Matthew is passionate about creating meaningful relationships with students, and he has served as a JV head football coach, varsity defensive coordinator, head wrestling coach, and student congress advisor. He is a culture builder and has worked tirelessly to create a positive student culture at Plymouth High School. Without question, he is a tremendous asset to Plymouth High School, PCEP, and Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Kristin Green, teacher at Miller School, is receiving tenure. And here's what Blair Council Principal at Miller would like to share. Kristin has been a part of the Miller family for the past five years. During her tenure at Miller, she has demonstrated a true love for her students, their academic success, and their overall well-being. She consistently goes beyond her classroom duties, actively participating on district curriculum committees and taking the lead on different committees at Miller. She is an asset to the Miller team and community, and I highly recommend her for tenure. Just so you know, when HR requests tenure recommendations, they request a paragraph. But let me share with you what Clint Smiley has written about Shannon Williams, which is two pages long. So thank you, Sherry, for following the direction. Shannon Williams, Language Arts Teacher at West Middle School, by Clint Smiley. It is my pleasure to recommend this Shannon Williams to you. I have worked with Shannon for the past five years as a middle school administrator and supervisor and evaluator. During this time, Shannon has been a teacher, student council advisor, grade level PLC leader. Based on her ability to build relationships, her work, athletic communication skills, and her skill in the classroom, Ms. Williams is an excellent candidate to receive tenure in the Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Ms. Williams is an outstanding teacher. She loves what she does, and it shows. She has the unique ability to present information to the wide range of students, staff, and parents that she sees in her numerous capacities so that they not only learn the material, but also enjoy the experience. Shannon is an extremely effective educator. Shannon Williams is a leader, team player, and effective communicator. I have had the pleasure of watching Shannon grow in her role as a building-level team member, district-level department leader, and student council advisor. Shannon's dynamic ideas and personality attract others to her and allow for her natural leadership to come to the forefront. Ms. Williams communicates extremely well with students, parents, teachers, both at West Middle School and throughout the district, special education staff, and administrators. Shannon Williams is a high-quality employee in Plymouth Canton Community Schools and West Middle School, and I recommend that she be granted tenure without reservation. Congratulations. Next, we have Bethany Welton, who's a classroom teacher at Tonda School. And here's what Dave Terrell, Principal at Tonda, would like to share about Bethany. Plymouth Canton Community Schools is fortunate to have an educator like Bethany Welton amongst their ranks. She comes to school every day with a smile on her face and a spirit that lets her students know that they will be cared for and loved. This simple yet crucial attribute sets the stage for deeper learning in her classroom. Students arrive ready to tackle whatever challenge she has prepared for them that day, and because of her level of experience and dedication, those challenges are often catered to the individual student needs so that they can meet every student where they are as individuals, academically, socially, and emotionally each day. Bethany also supports student-run organizations like our student council government. Modeling for students that go above and beyond is not the exception, but the expectation, and helps to encourage students to take on leadership roles within the school community. We value Bethany's talents and dedication and are proud to have her part of the Timber Wolf community. So congratulations to all of our wonderful teachers that have received tenure this evening.
And Caitlin, Kayla, and Sarah, do you want to come up for your special treats?
Thank you, Dr. Liz, and congratulations once again to our new hires, our retirees, and staff receiving tenure recommendations. All right, now for the real... I mean, that was really exciting. We always have the best time as a board doing, celebrating success. And it's actually great. After we celebrate our staff, we have additional celebrations. Tonight, we have a treat with two celebrations. So I'm going to start the first one with celebrating our own Dr. Merritt. So many of you know that our district was honored earlier this school year when our very own Superintendent, Dr. Merritt, who was named Superintendent of the Year in 2023 by the Michigan Association of Superintendents and Administrators. Tonight, it is my privilege to welcome Senator Baier to the podium to present a special proclamation from the state to recognize Dr. Merritt for this great accomplishment. But before I give her the floor, I have a few words. I'm sure we all have a lot of words, because this is such an honor for the district. So we all know that being named Superintendent of the Year is a great honor for Dr. Merritt and for the district and for the community as a whole. So it is a great accomplishment. And tomorrow, we will complete a successful school year. And I would like to thank Dr. Merritt for all of the hard work that she's put into making this year a huge success and naming PCCS as one of the best school districts in the state with that honor. I know I can speak for the entire board when I say that we are proud to be a part of the Plymouth Canton Community Schools with this honor standing next to or sitting next to Dr. Merritt. So Senator Baier, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. Thank you for including me at the meeting today and for this opportunity to honor your amazing superintendent. It really is a thrill for me to be here today and to honor Dr. Merritt as Michigan Superintendent of the Year. We've only known each other for a short time, but I very quickly learned what you all already know and many of your colleagues over years have known, how you are such a leader. You're recognized for your leadership and your creativity in meeting the needs of the students here at Plymouth Canton, the constantly changing needs. Your communication skills and professionalism have really enabled strong community ties, leading to success at every level for students, parents, teachers, and really the community overall. This is a huge impact here. The evidence of Dr. Merritt's success shines brightly as the district continues to receive top honors, such as the NASRO Safe School Award, several National Blue Ribbon School Awards, as well as Michigan Schools to Watch and U.S. News and World Report's Best Schools Ranking List. Many other honors for her as well. We are lucky to have Dr. Merritt in our Plymouth Canton school system. And so I want to share a little bit of this special tribute on behalf of the state of Michigan. I will say that Senator Polhankey also wanted to be here today, and she couldn't make it today. So I wanted to make sure you know that she is a part of this as well. I represent Plymouth as part of my district, and I share this school district with Senator Polhankey, who represents Canton. So the tribute starts out with, "Let it be noted that this is a special privilege to acknowledge Dr. Monica Merritt upon her recognition as Michigan Superintendent of the Year. This is an important occasion in Dr. Merritt's life and a most appropriate time to recognize her career and accomplishments." And it lists more than what I mentioned. We'll save that for later, perhaps. But I do want to make sure you all, if you don't know, the award itself... This is from the Michigan Association of Superintendents and Administrators recognizing the state superintendent recognized for many different skills and the recommendations of people, your colleagues, in this district. That's what really drives the choice. Lots of other things, research and investigation goes into the actual selection process, but it's the people here recommending Dr. Merritt and why she got this award. It's very clear how much it means to us all here to have such an incredible superintendent here for us. So it summarizes with this. "In special tribute, therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to honor and commend Dr. Monica Merritt for her exceptional service to the students of Plymouth Canton Community Schools. May she know of our admiration and warmest wishes and many success in all your future endeavors." And the tribute is signed by me, Rose Rivera, State Senator for the 13th District, Dana Polhankey, State Senator for the 5th District, Lieutenant Governor Garland Gilchrist II, and Governor Gretchen Whitmer.
Senator Baier, thank you for recognizing Dr. Merritt and our district. Dr. Merritt, would you like to say a few words?
I will say just a few words. You know my spirit is still at this moment. I am just deeply humbled for this recognition. I thank you, Senator Baier. And as I always talk about, it takes the strength of a village. And this award would not be possible without the collective effort of our entire school district. And I am talking about our dedicated teaching staff, our administrators, our support staff, the Board of Education, our students, our families. Again, everyone is committed to excellence here in our district. And we don't do this work because we want any recognition, but getting this external validation of the work that we do to really bring to light the essence of who we are, we propel our students to excellence. That's a part of our mission and vision. And so to be able to be recognized for that work, I'm telling you right now, this has been a challenging year, of course, but it has been an incredible year of celebration. And I am more motivated now than ever to just keep us going forward. So I thank you, I appreciate you, and we have Plymouth Canton on the map.
All right, our next celebrating success is going to be done by Chair Peke.
So I'm super excited this evening to be able to celebrate success for another fantastic educator for this district. This evening, we'll honor one of our truly outstanding leaders in the history of Plymouth Canton Educational Park, Plymouth High School Principal Sherry Steckel. Sherry has served as the principal at Plymouth for 12 years, where she has continuously gone above and beyond for her staff and students, arriving early and staying late. She's worked tirelessly to support and connect with her staff. Sherry is also a very visible and supportive principal towards PCEP students. She attends events for various athletics, clubs, and activities and connects with students and families on a regular basis. The Plymouth High School community will miss Sherry's presence next year as she takes on her new role as the West Middle School Principal. At this time, I'd like to invite PCEP teacher Scott Mylum to the podium to share more about the vital role that Sherry has played and the impact she's had at Plymouth High School over the years.
I always get so nervous on this microphone. I'll take a second. But Dr. Merritt, congratulations, that's so poor, so well deserved. Hello, thank you for having me. I'm so excited to do this. Sherry Steckel is a very big deal to me. Back in 2010, I applied to work at Plymouth Canton Schools, and on the hiring team, to get a hint at some of my bias, was Sherry Steckel was the lead. And she made a great decision. Believe it or not, back then, we used to get literally hundreds of applicants. And so I felt very special at that moment. That next year, she became my principal, and she has been my principal for 12 years. And I hope that I do justice tonight on how wonderful a stretch of 12 years that has been and how amazing of a job she's done. If you don't know Sherry Steckel, she starts most speeches or just about any conversation by saying, "Well, I promise I'm going to not cry." Usually, by the end of that statement, it has started. "I will assure you that I will not cry tonight. I am ready and prepared." So I want to start... There's a TV show I watch called Ted Lasso, and it's awesome. Football coach from America becomes a football coach in England with both applying in the respective countries. And there's a scene in one of the shows where Ted is at an establishment, and his boss Rebecca and her ex-husband comes in, and they start to play darts. And Ted makes a very large wager that would not work out well for his boss should he lose. And at the end of the game, he needs, familiar darts, two triple twenties and a bullseye in order to win. And he says at that moment, before he throws his first triple twenty, "A lot of people over my life have underestimated me. And I wish that instead," as he threw the second triple twenty, "that they should have been curious." A lot of people look to judge when they should look at, you know, "Did this person play darts every weekend with his father until his father died at 16?" And then he hits the bullseye to win the thing. And I can't think of a better way to encapsulate Sherry Steckel. She is so curious. When I watch her as a principal, you see a lot of people go into her office with a lot of anger, right? With conflicts that are not necessarily someone to blame and difficult to figure out. And she is an impeccable listener because she sees the good in people so readily. And so when she has conflicts that have little compromise, she's able to look for productive solutions. She's able to maintain the value in people and find, you know, how we can do something while maintaining their dignity. Believe it or not, occasionally, I've gotten in trouble over the last 12 years. And I would say that I really appreciate that when I was in trouble, that when Sherry would correct me, that it never felt as though she were judging me by that moment. She always judged me by the total of everything because she believes strongly that I could do better. One of my favorite things about Sherry Steckel is that at the very end of the school year, we have staff gatherings, and she goes around and recognizes people who are retiring and celebrates people who are retiring, leaving, and taking other jobs and things like that. And one of my hopes over my life has been that Sherry would do that for me when I retire. And I knew that wasn't possible based on the timing of our careers. So I'm so excited tonight to tell you about this. When Sherry does this, she knows everyone at Plymouth. If you were to pull a random Plymouth staff member out, she could tell you what year they started in. She could tell you all of their family members' names, probably their pets. She could tell you about what their passions were. She could tell you about stories that she's shared with them. But she could also share what makes them an excellent teacher. She really, really does see the good in all of the staff and has such strong relationships with all of us. I hope that I can share a little bit about what Sherry Steckel is like. Sherry Steckel has five daughters, two of whom are here tonight. So Isabella and Abby are students of mine. Chloe and Emma are currently at Plymouth High School. And Haley is here in the crowd, not quite at Plymouth High School yet, but eventually she'll have had five Wildcats. And then Sherry's husband, Mike, is here. I would say to all six of them that I know that she works long hours, and I know that, you know, you miss out on some of the things for the tremendous job that she's done has come sometimes at the expense of you. I would say, "We really appreciate all six of you a lot." That we appreciate all of the good moments that we've had with her. And thank you for helping to make that possible for her. On a personal note, Sherry has been my mentor for my tenure here at Plymouth High School. And she believed in me immediately at the beginning. And that has been very clear to me throughout my time, that she had high expectations for me, and that she helped me meet them. And I want to say personally, "Thank you, Sherry Steckel. You have been such an amazing boss." I'm not going to do it. Not going to do it. You have been such an amazing boss to me. And we will always remember your tenure with such fondness, and we hope that you get everything that you dream of at West. I know that you really are looking forward to forming relationships with students. And we hope that as you do that, because we know you'll do so good, that it reminds you of all the wonderful relationships you have formed with us over the last 12 years and all the good that you have done and facilitated at Plymouth High School as a Wildcat. So thank you, Sherry Steckel. Will you come up here so we can give you a hug and a word?
On behalf of the Board of Education, I present Sherry Steckel with the Mary Beth Carroll Extra Mile Award, consistently going the extra mile to support the students and staff at Plymouth High School.
I'm going to talk after that. I just want to say thank you. Congratulations. I... It's really super humbling. The recognition really goes to my family. As anybody who has a principal in their family knows. But also to the staff at Plymouth High School. It is me who has had the benefit. They have shaped a brand-new administrator, and they have been patient with my mistakes, and they have shared their thinking. Because wow, there's some, like, really powerful thinking that's going on, right? And they've broadened my perspectives. And one of the things that I said to them, and I mean it, is that they have made me a better educator and a better human as a result of working with them. So I'm so grateful. I told them, "There is just not enough gratitude to go around." I will miss them terribly, but they tell me often that I can hold those two emotions in the same space. That is okay. That it is okay to be really excited and then also really sad at the same time. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I love you guys.
Thank you, Sherry, for your dedication to Plymouth High School. I know you will carry that forward. And I want to thank the family for being here and supporting her and us. And same with Dr. Merritt, thank you to you and your family for all that you do for us. I will give them a minute to just go and get pictures. All right, we will keep going since Packett's got a little bit of time. We will move on to the Board We will move on to the Board Committee Report, starting with the President's Report. I don't have anything that President Wilson shared with me, but I will take the opportunity to say a few words, and I want to start by congratulating our graduates from Starkweather Academy, Canton High School, Plymouth High School, and Salem High School. We, as a board, had the honor and privilege of handing out diplomas over the last week, and it is one of those moments where that's what makes doing all of this work so worthwhile, is to see all of our graduates walk down that stage, get their diplomas, hug their families, hug their teachers, so it was quite the honor to be able to witness that. So congratulations to the class of 2023. I would also like to thank our retirees, as I said earlier, thank you for your dedication and time to improving student outcomes and programs here at PCCS. Thanks to Trustee McCoyn for attending the retiree dinner. Was there anyone else there? I just want to make sure I don't miss a pair. I heard that every staff member wanted a hug with Dr. Merritt, is that right?
Yes, it was.
As we come to an end of the 2023 school year, I would also like to thank everyone in the community for making this a very successful year. I know it's been another hard year, but you all continue to do so much for our staff, our students, for each other, and the community as a whole, so thank you for your ongoing support in making all of that happen. Moving on to another note, we met as a board last week on June 7th in a closed session to finalize the superintendent evaluation. As you know, that is one of the biggest responsibilities of the board, which we have to do every year by June, and after the closed session, we voted as a board to approve the recommendation of an effective status for Dr. Merritt for the 2022-23 school year. We would like to thank Dr. Merritt for all of her hard work and effort toward supporting our students and staff in our district, and I know she is dedicated to continuing to raise that bar higher for herself and the district. And that is all that I have for the President's Report. We will move to the next committee report, which is the Student Performance and Achievement Committee, that also falls under me, and we met last week Wednesday, and we, you'll see a couple items on tonight's agenda that we reviewed in the meeting, starting with the introduction to psychology course materials, and we also reviewed materials for specialized services programs, and out-of-country field trip, which we already voted on earlier. We spent quite a bit of time going through the goals and benchmark assessments for spring data, and that will come to the board later this month, and we don't have any meetings planned for the summer. As you know, in July, we meet as a board, and we approve our calendar for the next school year, so when that gets approved, our meetings for the 23-24 school year will be posted on the website. So I will have more later on as far as our next date. Next up is Policy Committee with Member McCoyn.
So we have not met, we generally meet the second board meeting of the month, so our meeting is June 27th, which is in two weeks from tonight, 5:30. If you want to attend, it is a collaboration space, follow this hallway all the way to the end, and there we will be. We are not, we will not be meeting in July, and we are working on the policies in the 5,000 section, which are students. So it's very exciting, we've been getting a lot of work done, and everyone is welcome.
Thank you, Member McCoyn. Next up is Finance and Operations with Trustee Peeko.
Fantastic, thank you. Just before I get started and then, I wanted to mention that I, along with Dr. Merritt, was able to attend the James R. Griffith dedication ceremony last Saturday at the Kent Theater, where we're going to be naming the new band hall that will be constructed later on this year, early next year, after him. James R. Griffith was the bandleader for the district for more than 40 years, and is amazing, to see the number of people that had come out that he had touched as part of that process, I'm sure that was the additional comment. But it was a great ceremony. We did meet as an FNO committee last Thursday, we actually had a meeting in a different location, we met at the Salem High School conference room there to allow the board members that are on the FNO committee to participate in the Starkweather graduation, which was a fantastic event. At that FNO meeting, we discussed the public budget hearing that we saw this evening, we discussed the two property sale agreements that will be up on the agenda this evening, a French horn RFP bid that will be up this evening, as well as safety and security purchases that will also be up this evening. We also considered the work that will be on the agenda this evening for exterior building signs as part of our bond program at Izvistre Pioneer in Starkweather, and we deferred a meeting on the 2020 bond program update because of the depth of the agenda that we have. Our next FNO meeting is here in this room on Thursday, June 22nd, at 5:00 p.m., and we welcome the community to attend.
Thank you, Chair Peeko. Our next committee report is Student Voice and Action Committee, and we will have our student co-chairs give us an update.
Hello, everyone, my name is Josh Patterson, and I'm an SVA co-chair as well as a freshman.
Hello, my name is Saidi Poir, and I'm also an SVA co-chair as well as a sophomore at Canton. Within the past couple of weeks, our seniors at PSEP and Starkweather have been wrapping up their high school careers, so we wanted to take a minute to say congratulations to the class of 2023, who recently had their graduation ceremony. Some meetings that were attended by members of Student Voice and Action were the Coffee with Monica event on May 20th, the PCCS Policy Meeting on May 23rd, and the PCCS Student Performance and Achievement Meeting on June 7th, and the PCCS Finance and Operations Meeting on June 8th.
At our last SVA meeting, we communicated updates on Student Voice and Action's forum that has been put around the middle and high schools. We also further discussed the possibility of student liaisons, we are thinking two to three liaisons per committee is a good number to have. Mr. Brandon also presented the 2023 PCCS Family School Relationship Survey results to SVA, in which we had the privilege to review it and give constructive feedback. That presentation will be shown later, so I don't want to steal Mr. Brandon's spotlight.
Regarding upcoming meetings, our most recent meeting was our last meeting for the school year, so we currently do not have any meetings scheduled for the summer. However, we are looking to maybe have a few meetings that would be completely optional to attend, which are still to be determined.
As the school year comes to an end, we would also wanted to give a big thank you to all the teachers and staff employed in our district who worked so hard to make our community a better place to raise our young leaders of this district. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have one more committee report, which is the Ad-Hoc Committee. Trustee McCoyn?
All right, so this committee's completed their work, and we provided a recommendation to the superintendent, and it's been forwarded to her, Dr. Merritt. Dr. Merritt will now be reviewing this document, since this was a new policy, hope we got it all, but she'll let us know. So she can either accept the recommendation, and then she will discuss with President Wilson and Vice President Christensen on how to provide this information to the entire board. She can reject the recommendation, or she may have some clarifying questions or ask for additional information, in which case she will get with Mr. Tiskowitz and Mr. Hurd to get that information from them, and then they will handle it from there. I would like to thank the committee members for their willingness to participate in the work. Mr. Tiskowitz and Mr. Hurd co-chaired the committee, there were also teachers, administrators, and some other district staff participated. Outside of their regular workday, they still had regular work to do. We also had some district parents, community members, the community members were all alumni of the district, and several high school students. We had frequent meetings because we did have a 90-day window to complete the work from start to finish, and several of the members spent considerable time outside the meetings reviewing the information and writing their recommendation. I appreciate their hard work and their dedication, and as a reminder, our students, our children in the district, and we are going to make sure we all treat them with the respect we would expect given to our own children. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee McCoyn. We will now move on to administrative reports and recommendations, starting with the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, since this is our last meeting of the regular school year, we will have another board meeting in June, but our students are ending their time with us on tomorrow, so I just want to take another opportunity to continue on with the celebrations. We've heard about our fantastic graduations, the four graduations that took place over the last few days, over 1,300 members of the class of 2023 participated in these graduations, and when I tell you how proud we are of our young future leaders as they embark on this next chapter in their lives, whether they are intending on going on to college or university, entering a trade school, serving our military, getting a job or internship, and some of them may not have figured it out yet, and that's okay, taking their time to see what is in store for them. We are so incredibly proud of their accomplishments, they definitely have been through a lot throughout their entire career, but most importantly, the last three years, and they have just led with success, resilience, determination, and perseverance, and they just represent the true essence again of Plymouth Canton Community Schools, we're so proud of them. Continuing on, in this place of celebration, we heard about our retirement, so we retired our class of 2023 retirees that have dedicated their years of service here to our students and really making us a stellar school district. Talking about our students and their accomplishments, there are so many, and I definitely will not be able to name them all, but just wanted to highlight a few. Here you see represented our Salem Girls Basketball Team, they made the MHSAA final for this school year, we had the PCEP Culinary Team winning a national championship, we had 88 Won the Park winning its sixth annual and consecutive Michigan Association of Broadcasters High School Station of the Year Award, PCEP Wind Ensemble performed at the Michigan Music Conference, our PCEP Choirs joined the Eastern Michigan University on a performance tour that was in Italy, this is our PCEP senior, Junhee Poir, she was named one of 13 Michigan semifinalists in the annual U.S. Presidential Scholars Program, that is just a huge accomplishment, just so incredibly proud of her. We welcome Echo, that's our therapy dog, but he's not just a therapy dog, remember that he is also a firearms protection dog, he's a part of our safety and security team, he is here as our staff, and really just making his way through our district and helping to keep our students safe and provide comfort at the same time, just out of the box thinking. Our PCCS elementary schools, just being incredibly good people, they teamed up to donate thousands of items to local charities throughout our community, we're so proud of them. Our high school, elementary school robotics team earned trips to their respective world championships. When we're looking at our middle school students, East Middle School's math team had a strong showing at state mathematics competitions, and the chess team won its second consecutive state championship. Now, all of this is going on in one school district in one school year, so we talk about a lot to celebrate, our kids are amazing, and they are able to do this with the support of our amazing staff. We had incredible community engagement at our second annual Mental Health and Wellness Fair, as we talk about really nurturing environments for students to excel academically, we also need to make sure that we're taking care of their mental health, their social, emotional, and removing the stigma, so just seeing our community show up for this fair, and our resources around the community coming together to wrap their arms around our students and families, it was really impressive. Our Department of Student and Family Engagement finished its first year of working to help our district families with both like inside and outside of the classroom, when we talk about Plymouth Canton community, community is in the name of our school for a reason, so we're truly wrapping ourselves around our community. We had a PCCS social worker, Mary Demeris, was named M.A.S.S.W., Region 8, School Social Worker of the Year. We celebrated the opening of the renovated Logan Auditorium, we continue to thank our community for our support of the bond just creating this space, and we had a pair of outstanding performances here, these are our park players, they had some performances that are incredible this school year, and they were able to accomplish that with the work of this, the place of this auditorium. We celebrated Field Pioneer and West, all receiving exemplary endorsements for their school libraries, and this is something we're proud of in Plymouth Canton, as we've had cuts across the state, and many libraries and media centers have been cut, this is something that we are, we continue to be invested in, and so we have a librarian at each of our schools, and having this endorsement is something that we're very proud of. Plymouth High School teacher Casey Swanson, he was here a little earlier today, he was honored by the American Psychological Association with the Mary Margaret Moffett Memorial Teaching Excellence Award. PCEP teacher Barbara Ruttecki was named Michigan Virtuals 2022 Online Mentor of the Year. Plymouth High School teacher Scott Mylum, who was here this evening as well, was named as a state finalist for MDE's Presidential Teaching Award for Mathematics and Science Teaching, so you wonder how our students are able to achieve all of these championships, because there is nothing but the best in terms of the educators in front of them leading the charge. Our Director of State and Federal Programs, Ms. Kimberly May, was named one of Michigan's 2023 National Association of Federal Education Program Administrators, State Leadership Award winners. This year, you're looking at our young co-chairs here right now, there was the successful launch from the Board of Education of the Student Voice and Action Committee, and this is truly a recognition of one of our goals, to incorporate student voice in everything that we do, so just having your valuable voice and perspective has really been something that's inspiring to me as your superintendent, so it's something that we really want to celebrate and amplify. We opened the year with a wonderful, and successful, back-to-school bash, that was at PCEP, we brought it in-house this year, and I think that that was really something that was received well by our community, and we're already planning for our bash at the start of the 23-24 school year, so mark the date, save the date, Saturday, August the 26th, and again, this will be at the PCEP bus loop. We launched our Early Middle College this year, and that was not a small feat, and when you think about that Early Middle College, you're looking at our middle school families and having the opportunity to save some money as they prepare, and students are able to partner to receive college credits early as they're also getting their high school diploma. So, so many things to celebrate, again, I hesitate to name a few, because I know that there's so many more to celebrate, but it's just, again, a recognition of the incredible work, even through challenges, that our kids do with the support of the adults and our entire school community to shine. I do want to thank one of our partners, ABM, this is a new partnership that we've had for our custodial service. This year, our ABM partners completed their first year with the district by investing in our students, they offered four $5,000 scholarships, one for each student at our high schools, and they're awarding to seniors who have, they work with our team to find seniors who have gone above and beyond in their time at PCEP. So just wanted to shout out those students, this year's winners at Plymouth High School, we had Ashley Rosenwicks, who will attend Madonna University, Salem High School's Sophia Werner, who will attend the University of Michigan, Canton High School's Chloe Farmil, who will attend University of Northwest Ohio Automotive Technology, and Starkweather High School's Ashley Tanana, who will attend Grand Valley State University. So as you can see, again, this has been an incredible year to celebrate, and I hope that you all take a moment right now to this joy. I am going to model for this staff that it is time, as we enter into the summer, to step back, relax a little bit, recharge, and make sure that we take care of ourselves, but then we'll be right back in the saddle as we prepare for next year, because as Secretary Sidhu said, we are competitive, and the bar has been set high, and I promise you, we will accelerate and exceed. So thank you again, and I can't wait to see what's in store for our great school community.
Thank you, Superintendent Merritt, I love hearing all of that, it's a lot. We will now move to Finance and Operations with Ms. Piaz.
Thank you very much. This evening, we have a approval to sell property located at 987 Mill Street in Plymouth, Michigan, in the amount of $500,000. This is a purchase agreement that we have negotiated with Vitigary Contractors, Inc., our neighbors to that property. This is as a result of the combination of the Maintenance and Operations Department with the Technology Department, the Family and Student Engagement Department, and certain members of the Teaching and Learning Department into our new acquisition property at Pallet Chai, called the Educational Support Center, that was purchased in the last fiscal year, and so now we're able to make available for sale the buildings that were vacated by the staff that moved to the new building. We had an RFP process, Request for Proposal process, were interviewed, several rounds of interviews, and Mr. Vitigary, and Vitigary Contractors, Inc., was the highest bidder, in this case, we're going for a high number, not a low number, at $500,000. This was discussed at the Finance and Operations Committee meetings on May 18th and June 8th, as well as a board close session.
Thank you, any questions from board members? Any questions from board members?
Just for reference for everybody, this is the building that's just across from the bus, the transportation building on Mill Street right by East Middle School, and so it's worked very well for Mr. Vitigary because it consolidates his property ownership there, and it is not a facility that we need to use.
Thank you, Tasha Keogh. Any other questions, comments? Yes, thank you.
All right. All right. Next, we have the approval to sell the Taker Center property located on forty, located at forty-two sixty Five Mile Road. This is at north of Five Mile and west of Hagerty, to Toll Brothers, Inc., in the amount of one million four hundred and six thousand dollars. This, again, has been reviewed by legal counsel and due diligence required. All the requirements have been completed. The board has met a closed session, as well as the FNO Committee on May eighteenth and June eighth, to discuss the details behind the proposal. In addition, both purchase agreements are included in your agenda materials for review.
Thank you. Tasha?
Just for some context around this one, this will take us a while to close because this property needs to be rezoned, and it needs to go through the approval process with Northville Township. It's in Plymouth Canton Schools, but it's located in Northville Township, so it could be, I believe it's till early twenty twenty-five.
Correct. So we have a ninety-day inspection period, then we have up to a year of governmental approvals period, and we have an extension of governmental approvals period into, if we did it on the math correctly, January of twenty twenty-five. So it's going to take a while to get through the Northville Township process. It's two times at the Planning Committee for the rezoning and two times for the site plan, and then it comes to full council as well. So it's a minimum of six meetings through the Northville Township, but it'll probably be more based on questions back and forth that we have, similar to what we do, and we approve four type of resolutions here as well.
Yeah, it's the latest date. It wouldn't be any later.
What was it? Can you repeat that?
It's in January of twenty-five.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board? Okay, so this is the first reading. If anything does come up, please send those to President Wilson and Dr. Barrett.
I'm sneaking in to hijack the next one on the agenda for Finance and Operations, coming out of my teaching and learning role and sneaking over into Finance and Operations. This is a request for a recommendation or a recommendation to purchase twenty double French horns for the PCCS finance program. We have twenty double French horns that we're looking to purchase to replace old instruments that are beyond repair. On May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, the district publicly opened five bids, and based on this proposals, we're recommending the purchase from Taylor Music Incorporated, who submitted the lowest bid. The cost to purchase the twenty double French horns would be sixty-two thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, and again, it's a first reading, so I'll answer any questions that you might have.
We ask a lot of questions in FNO.
Thank you for the vetting process in FNO.
All right. We're going to keep going.
Safety and Security Recommendation Purchases. This is the state aid, categorical state aid, Section ninety-seven funds. This is a partial award of those funds, a total cost, that looks to be one point eight nine nine three hundred. This is a Code Blue emergency call box, an installation of access control security enhancements for our extended day programs, a shooter detection system, an installation of secure vestibule cameras and officer monitoring equipment, and installation of building entry emergency identifiers. This award is as a result of the third-party safety and security assessment conducted by Secure Education Consultants, SEC, as well as some internal assessments conducted by our PCCS Department of School Safety and Security. In addition, Safewell, although not a minority-owned business, does use minority contractors to subcontract some of their work, and it is through the state of Michigan, as I said, the school aid, Section ninety-seven funds. This resolution was presented at the FNO meeting on June eighth as well, and we'll entertain any questions you have at this time.
Tasha Keogh, I see that you want to add.
As my recorded speeches, that we discuss this extensively at FNO, Security Director Meyer walked through all of this and how it would be deployed and what we're doing with the process. And so with the start of the work, this is using the money that we have now. There's a long, long list of things that we want to do additionally on security as part of the district, and we anticipate getting additional funds as part of this next cycle.
Thank you.
I just had one question.
Sure.
Can you tell me what a building entry emergency identifiers is? Is that like badges or?
A building entry emergency identifier is basically a blinking light, a strobe light that will go on over the building entrances, so in the event of an emergency, first responders will know where to go to.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I would just like to say thank you for all this work to keep our students safe.
It's a collaborative effort with Safety and Security headed by Josh Meyer, Mark Saltzer, our Department of Technology head, as well as Kurt Tiskowitz and Tim Krasinski, our in charge of facilities. As you know, it takes power and takes coordination, so I want to thank all of gentlemen for helping.
Absolutely, and I appreciate the external audit to get another set of eyes on where the gaps are, so thank you for that work. All right, we can keep going.
All right, next up, we have the purchase of three electronic building signs for Bister, Pioneer, and Starkweather. These are similar, if not exactly the same, as our EL-one buildings, Dodson, Erickson, Field, and Hulson, as well as our EL-two buildings, Byrd, Miller, and Smith. And so those are similar, we call it the fireside look, so it's a brick bottom, brick sides, and a monitor mounted inside. So we'll have a consistent look and feel and banding with our Plymouth Canton logo. So we're excited about being consistent throughout the district and getting these ordered. As you can tell, it's Dectronics is the equipment itself, and we have estimates for masonry, electrical, and insulation, which will come later. These are, you know, chipped, and so we order today, but it might take a few months or so, and so people aren't willing to basically estimate the installation costs more than two months out. So as soon as we get those, then we'll come back if these estimates are incorrect or if we come back to work for additional resolution for additional funding, but this is what we think the installation cost will be, and that's a wish to your resolution.
Any questions, comments from board members?
I really appreciate that we are standardizing the signs. It really makes the curb feel so much better, and for people who are unaware, at one point, if you needed to replace a sign at your school, the CFO was responsible, so I'm really glad the district is taking on this cost also.
Thank you for that context, Tristine Coy. All right, the next item is a final reading, so I am looking for a motion for action item number twenty-three dash zero six dash eighty-five.
Ms. Sedu, I move that we consider approval of a resolution for Technology Bond Bid Package Key Seven, Part Two, PA Systems. This is a final reading, and the action number is twenty-three oh six eighty-five.
Thank you for a second.
Second.
Okay, this is by member Keogh, seconded by member Westra. We did review this at the last meeting and had a thorough Q and A time, but if you have any questions, please ask them now. Any other context to add?
Just standardizing our paging equipment across the room so that we can provide notifications both locally and remotely.
And efficiently, from what we talked about last time. Really well executed. All right, if there are no other questions, I'm looking for votes. All in favor, say yes.
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 Any opposed, say no. Pass is five zero for action item number twenty-three dash zero six dash eighty-five. All right, we are moving on to the next segment, Teaching and Learning, with Ms. Rayle, so we could go through the first part. Again, this is reviewed at SPA, as we talked about earlier.
In alignment with Teaching and Learning Strategic Objective One, where we're looking at ensuring that all students meet a level of proficiency or higher, and closing and eradicating demographic gaps between groups, we do continuous improvement and continuously look at our programming, and during that look at the programming throughout the last year, one of the areas that we've identified are some additional support for our students with IEPs, also known as specialized services. So the first reading tonight is for Encore by TeachTown materials. Encore by TeachTown is a unique education program that offers K-12 students with moderate to severe disabilities equitable and inclusive access to the general ed curriculum, along with individualized interventions to support their success. This is a standards-based program that is aligned with the alternative common core academic standards essential elements. So think about our Michigan academic standards, but with some additional modifications for our students who have some additional needs. Encore is a comprehensive whole-classroom solution, and the English language arts portion of it is based on the science of reading. Additionally, Encore is the only standards-based adaptive curriculum that is based on Applied Behavior Analysis, ABA, so folks who could do a lot of work around autism spectrum disorder are familiar with ABA and therapy and the therapeutic principles of ABA. The purchase that we are bringing forth, and we talked about this extensively at SPA, would cover the cost of a program, a pilot for the program with seventy-four students, nine teachers, in our cognitive impaired CI and ASD, Autism Spectrum Disorder, programs. Year one costs include all the materials, resources, et cetera, for a total of seventy-four thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-four cents. There would be a recurring cost of this, which has been built into the future special education budgets, and then based on the outcomes of our pilot year, we'll revisit, do we want to expand the program beyond this year? But this is a first read, so I just want to entertain any questions that you might have, and again, we did talk about this extensively at SPA.
Member Wester, do you have any other things to add since you were at the SPA meeting?
Just that we talked about this extensively at SPA, and it's an excellent program. It'll be an excellent addition for our students.
And we have just a reminder to the community, we do have community representatives sitting on that, and they ask questions as well, and so that's why we brought it to the board for a first read. Any questions? Okay, so we will go on to the next item.
The next item is also a first read. This is for a new course request for a textbook resource for Introduction to Psychology. Introduction to Psychology is a very popular semester-long social studies lecture in PCCS. We have approximately two hundred students who take this course each semester, taught by four teachers. As we look at the change in the standards, in twenty-twenty-two, February of twenty-twenty-two, the American Psychological Association adopted updated standards, which would mean, moving forward, that our course materials would be out of alignment with the new standards. So the team did extensive work looking at multiple texts. One of the things to note is this does have a twenty-nineteen copyright, and as we pass it around, I just want to be kind of clear and transparent that there are not a lot of resources available for high school intro to psychology courses. Most of the materials that are out there are really for AP or honors psych, so finding resources was difficult to begin with, but we did extensive review of all the resources that were available, got feedback from the teachers, got feedback from the psychology team, got feedback from students and stuff, and this is the resource that is being recommended by that team. Total cost for this resource, Thinking About Psychology and all the accompanying resources, would be forty-five thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. This would include the purchase of physical tech classroom sets, as well as digital access to online resources for five years. The one thing I will say is that the online resources are updated, so even though the physical copy of the textbook has a bit of an older copyright, every year they update the resources, so the online resources are actually even more current than the physical copy of the textbooks. Additional classroom textbooks have been, will be ordered, and additional student licenses purchased in case we do have an increase again. It's a very popular course. We've seen increase in enrollments over time, and also be available to students who want to, who may need to take one home, check one out and stuff for the physical copy. So I'll entertain any questions you might have as well.
Thank you. I'll add a little bit of context to this one. So I appreciate the team bringing the textbook materials to the committee. We have a chance to review it, goes around. However, I didn't get it until the end of the meeting because we had so much to cover, and we had another meeting right after that. So I did ask Ms. Rayle to bring that forward at today's meeting, so I am looking for board members to give us another set of eyes on it. When I originally glanced at it, it just looked really dated, so I did question that with Ms. Rayle, saying, you know, this investment, we look at the textbook, looking at it, I mean, I'm thinking this is from eighties or nineties, and so that was a concern to me. So she responded by saying that the online textbook is updated regularly, which is, you know, a huge relief. However, I still want us to take another look at this. Member Wester, I don't know if you have any other comments that you want to add from SPA?
No, I think, just that we discussed it quite a bit, and as you said, we looked at the textbook afterwards, so it would be good for the whole committee to take a glance through it.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Just a related comment, is it normal for our electronic textbooks to be updated annually or to be updated continuously? Because I don't think we've ever discussed that, but it certainly is an important aspect to that.
Yep, that's a great question. Generally speaking, most of them are updated annually. Most of the time, they're minor tweaks to the updates. There are times when they will, that they would not be updated every year and only updated when the new textbook itself, the new curriculum resource rolls out, so. Kind of depends on the vendor. Some vendors do them annually.
If you could add that into the, when you bring those textbooks forward, to let us know whether these things are updated or not, because I think it's an important factor we're considering, especially for folks that maybe, you know, have a decade of.
And I do understand the limitations with this one, given that the standards changed for Introduction to Psychology and very few materials out there to support the new standard, so. All right, we will move to the next item.
The third one is again a first reading, and this is for a program called PACE, Practical Assessment Exploration Program. It's a research-based functional skills curriculum with an embedded formative assessment of career, potential, and employability skills. So this would be used as a resource in our community-based instruction course within our special education programs. What we're really looking at is both online computer modules and hands-on activities that help build work-related problem-solving skills, soft skills, insight into employability skills and work settings. So think about a lab where you see a lot of young people engaging in career-based activities to build job skills in computer technology, construction, industrial processing, production, and customer service professions. This would serve our eleventh and twelfth grade students in our cognitive impaired programs, our CI programs, and post-secondary students in our GOLs program. Purchase would cover the cost of all curriculum assessment and data collection materials, along with professional development for our staff, for a total cost of thirty-six thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and sixty cents. The only recurring cost for that at the present time would be a thousand dollars a year for consumable products or materials, which would be included in our future special education budget.
Thank you, and just to add a little bit more context to this one, Ms. Rayle showed a picture of the program, and it looked phenomenal, just to see how engaging, updated, all of that information was. I'm really excited about this program coming to PCCS. We also talked about this being one lab setting, so all the students from the park and the GOLs program would come to that one classroom, and if there was a need to expand this to get it to the GOLs program, that we want that brought back to SPA and the board to say, this has been hugely successful, we want another lab in a different building. So really appreciate that, but we're excited to learn more about this program.
Just to echo what member Sedu said, it's a, it looks like an excellent program for, and a good value for the amount of use that we'll get out of it.
And if, whenever you're ready, I'd like to do a little visit of the students using it. I'm telling you, you know, these are some of the things that you want to invest in when students get their hands on data materials that are relevant, engaging, so really excited about this.
And our staff did an onsite visit in a local school district who has a PACE lab too, to see it in action, and came back very excited about the potential and possibilities for our young people.
Awesome. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. All right, that is it for Teaching and Learning. We will now move to Citizens' Comments. I have a little stack here. Just a reminder, each person will have three minutes, uninterrupted three minutes, and there will be no back and forth, and once the timer is up for Mr. Brandon, we will have you end. So we will start with Cameron Miller.
I'd like, first of all, thank you, folks. I don't know if you know how much we're appreciative. It's kind of been one of the hardest and most It's kind of one of the hardest and most important jobs in this country and probably one of the most thankless jobs, and we appreciate it. A little bit about myself, I'm the senior partner of a law firm here in town. Be it good or be it bad, I am a product of Plymouth Canton schools, from the first day of kindergarten to being commencement speaker at our graduation. I am also the first graduate of Canton High School. I served on the dedication committee for the school building itself with E.J. McLendon, who this building is named after. Most recently, I was a member of the An Ha Committee regarding Canton High School mascot and nickname. I was led to believe that that committee was to review if the mascot logo should be changed or not. But at the very first meeting, it became clear the committee was not going to consider whether it should be changed or that it was going to be changed. Our first week's homework assignment we had included a list of what we thought the mascot should be. Chiefs was not an option listed even. While the dedication committee, while I'm the dedication committee, I was part of the dedication ceremony itself. I accepted the quote-unquote "school," keys to the school from Dr. McLendon on behalf of all then-current and future students. Because Dr. McLendon had let us know that he was a full-blooded Native American, we asked him of the name of the mascot, Chiefs, and the logo was offensive at all in any way. His response was, absolutely not. Any tribe would find this logo an honor. As part of the committee, we had a survey that was run out. A lot of work went into that survey. Dr. Merritt was given a copy of that. I don't know if it'll be shared with the committee at all. I guess it depends on what you decide to do. It was, the one thing that was clear was that the committee didn't want anything to do with the results of the survey. The non-unanimous majority simply ignored the community's voice. The recommendation is going to say that the slightly, a slight majority favored keeping the name Chiefs. Results are much higher. The recommendation, however, the committee most importantly notes that many people responded saying they would really like some input from Native Americans. I told you what Dr. McLendon said. We reviewed all 6,206 survey responses and being passed out now is only the responses from people who identify themselves as of Native American heritage. We figured you didn't want to go through 6,000 surveys to see what it was. And again, the community said they wanted to know what Native Americans input was. What you're being handed is strictly those that identify themselves as Native Americans. Are they Native American? I don't know. I don't know anybody inside the home heritage. There are a few other people here. You also, we see my time running down. I see that you have the National Native Americans Guardian Association sent a couple letters. They are begging you to please keep the name. Their response is educate, don't eradicate.
Thank you. Do you have a shot with Rob Mullin? Rob Mullin, you're up next.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Robert Mullin. I am to each proud chief graduate of Canton High School, and I carry that with me throughout my life. And I think part of being a chief for me was my experience with the teachers. It's the educators who kind of embody some of that pride of who you are. Now, I know people are talking about a lot of different things, and I looked over the proposal, asked you why, and I wrote down some comments. We know the chief name has evolved over the years since its inception in 1973. The general society as a whole has adopted the word chief throughout it. When I worked at the hospital, it was the chief surgeon. When I worked at court, it was the chief judge. We have fire chiefs, police chiefs, and our politicians now have co-opt chief as a staff. But not everyone thinks chief is more of a secular thing. We tie it here at our school to our mascot name to Native Americans, and I understand that. But I don't think that that's necessarily a bad thing. I think that we're looking up to the image of what a chief is. And what is a chief? If we look at it from the identity of a Native American tribe, a chief is a leader of that community. And in that community, they have many values. A chief is a leader of a community that supports such values as generosity, kinship, wisdom, prayer, respect, and compassion. These values come from the Indian, the Native American heritage of the Lakota tribe. And I present them because when we look at chief, it doesn't necessarily have to be a negative thing, it can be a positive thing. And what values do we have in our society that could encompass the great diversity that we have in Plymouth Canton and our schools? I'm a product of this environment, and I can tell you, as a criminal lawyer here in the community now for over 25 years, I'm proud to be a criminal lawyer here and I'm proud to be part of this community. And I'm proud that we're a diverse community based on choice. Many times, I see diversity throughout our society and it's based on poverty or it's based on wealth. Either you have enough money to get in or you're so poor you can't get out. Here, it's by choice. And the values I read that are part of the American, the Native American values, those are things that I think encompass across the board for the diversity of this community. So when we look at chief, let's not look at it from a position of offense, let's look at it from a position of reverence in some of the values that it encompasses. Now, when I looked at that proposal, there are many things that I thought were false. I don't think that chief incorporates bigotry or the ability not to be safe in our community or creates instability. Chief creates something we can rally around and all have a stake in that value. It's just how we present it to ourselves.
Thank you. Next up is Steve Robb.
Hello. My name is Steve Robb. I'm a member of the White Earth Tribe of Minnesota Chippewas and a retired history teacher. I taught at the public schools for 34 years. My mother was born on the White Earth Reservation and is buried there. I have relatives on the reservation that I still visit. The last thing the people on the reservation are worried about are school mascots, nicknames, and logos. Like many Americans, they're concerned about living conditions, affordable housing, healthcare, educational opportunities, and feeding their families. Changing the mascot, nickname, the logo, does absolutely nothing to help Native Americans. The nickname Chiefs is not offensive to any Native American that I know. To the people on my reservation, it is an honor to be called chief. Less than 0.2% of Plymouth Canton residents in the 2020 census claim Native American origin. Is there a public outcry among that 0.2% to change the nickname? I don't think so. I applaud students who want to make a difference, but in my opinion, the time, energy, and money spent on this issue could be better spent and applied to actually helping Native American families and with those things that can help improve their quality of life. I have been with Canton Chief football players in a sock donation project for the homeless and a milk drive for the needy in our community. It is my belief that focusing efforts on projects like these would make a difference in Native American families and communities as they would in any American community. Canton Township recently renamed Patriot Park. The Ziboise Nature Area is named in honor of the Pokagon Tribe of Potawatomi Indians who inhabited this area. Perhaps the schools should follow their lead and consider honoring Native Americans as opposed to eliminating their heritage. The slogan of NAGA, as Mr. Miller already said, Native American Guardians Association, is educate, not eradicate. They believe that deleting mascots, et cetera, is part of a movement to erase the heritage and memories of the Native American people. The Guardians' influence is rising and they are opposed to most mascot changes. If we eradicate the chief's nickname, then we need to eradicate names like Chief Human Resources Officer. That's ridiculous, right? But no more ridiculous than focusing valuable resources on eliminating the chief mascot. I have taught at four schools with native nicknames. The other three are still the Chiefs, the Indians, and the Big Reds. In conclusion, I'm a Rock graduate. My kids are Wildcats. I was a Canton Chief football coach. In my opinion, the Chiefs have the best traditions at the park, most energy, and the greatest spirit. And I would not like to see that spirit diminished or taken away. Thank you.
Next up is Karen Stemberger.
I'll just take a few minutes and read the letter that I sent to the board on May 15th. I have yet to hear back from the questions that I have in my letter, so I'll just go ahead and read the letter verbatim. Dear Members and Superintendent Merritt, the purpose of this letter is to inquire about and express concern regarding the possibility of removing the Canton Chiefs as the Canton High School's team name. As a 50-plus-year resident, taxpayer, former PCS graduate, and graduated PCS children, a former teacher, and a supporter of our school district, I am deeply concerned that you would consider replacing the Chiefs. My husband was the first graduating class from Canton High School and was recently inducted into the Chiefs Hall of Fame. He was a leader in school athletics and later in his professional life. In 1975, my husband and his classmates were given the honor and privilege of deciding the new Canton High School team mascot, name, colors, and fight song. I might also add that Dr. E.J. McLendon was superintendent at the time, and he was Native American who endorsed the name Chiefs. The idea that chief is disrespectful or racist, today's buzzword, depends on who you talk to, I guess. I am part Native American, and the name Chiefs is not offensive. The word chief is not disrespectful, but rather an honor to people of all cultures that use the word chief to describe a person with leadership qualities. In Native American languages, the word chief is Sakima and Ogima for their leaders. Did you know the word chief is an English word derived from the French word chef? It is used to describe anyone who has authority. Isn't Shanta Langford your chief HR officer? So why are you considering the name change? I understand that a student from Salem High School had some type of project. Would this project relate to college applications or grant money? I'd like to ask this student and district personnel the following questions, which I still have not had an answer from yet. Who initiated the idea and for what purpose? What data has been collected to support changing the name? From whom was the data collected? Do stakeholders have a voice in this decision? I have not seen any newspaper articles, except The Rock published an article, but otherwise I have not seen it publicized. This is an important decision to the community. Since every PCCS resident pays school taxes, have you sent them all a survey? How much money would the district receive if the change gets pushed through? Chief definition again, a person with the highest rank in an organization. Of course, the social and political climate that we are facing today is on a cancellation track. I noticed that you've removed the Canton arrowhead from the building. It makes no sense to remove the name Chiefs. It would make more sense to form curriculum review committees. I suggest that students and/or committee members initiate a project to study Native Americans and their important contributions to this country. Instead of canceling the name Chiefs, we should look deeper into Native American history and social studies benchmarks to enrich our understanding, cultivate true inclusivity, and honor diverse perspectives. Thank you for the extra two seconds.
Next up is Jeff Sisalak. Did I say that correctly?
Yes. My name is Jeff Sisalak, and I live at 939 Peniman, and I'm the proud parent of three successful PCCS alumni. I'm here not to speak about education actually, but to speak about recreation. For literally 20 years, I organized an adult volleyball group that played on the racquetball courts at PACE 3. And understandably, the opportunity was suspended during COVID, but the crisis ended some time ago and we are still waiting for it to restart. So I'm not sure if you guys understand how popular this program was, but twice a year, both in the fall and in the winter, they actually had a lottery. And there was like 100 people would show up and they would pull names out of a hat to get your time slot. I think there's, it was four days, three time slots, and there's four courts. And almost all of those got sold out in that day. Like, it was extremely true to popular. And it actually got a little contentious at some of those ones, so they changed to an online program, which worked out a lot better. And I'm not even explaining it, you know, that's not really the point, other than to kind of express to you how incredibly beloved and popular this program was. So I called the community ed the other day to understand, you know, what the deal was. And they said it actually wasn't COVID at this point, but something about safety and keeping the door near the courts secure. I don't know exactly what the issue is, but I'm sure it's solvable if the right people, you know, looked into it. And perhaps if one of you just made a phone call, you know, might break this thing free so that we could start in fall. You know, maybe we have to have participants commit to keeping that door secure. I know sometimes it got left open, maybe it got left open overnight. I actually don't know. They said something about if we could cordon that hallway with the racquetball courts separate from where the swimming pool and the gym is, that would help. Like I said, I don't want to propose a solution because I don't even know what the problem is, but even if there was money involved, you guys are losing revenue. I mean, we paid for that, and I think it was, I don't know, $150 to reach one of those courts for all those slots. So, yeah, I know the community ed is not your primary mission, but please, please help me bring back this beloved program to our community. Like I said, maybe this is a phone call, and actually I'd be more than willing to help brainstorm to try to break this free. And, you know, please help me make this program available starting this fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Alexis Dakota from Vernamos?
Vernamos, yes. Hi, my name is Alexis, and I am also a lifelong PCCS student and graduate. I went to Smith, West, and Plymouth. I'm also the child of a Salem Rock and a Canton chief. My uncle is Steve Robb, and I am also obviously of Chippewa descent. My grandmother instilled our culture in our family my whole life. And when Cam Miller let me know that the chief's name was going to be changed without any public input, I was very upset, to say the least. And I read on here tonight as we're sitting through this meeting, the district's mission, "PCCS will develop capable, involved citizens who recognize that they are citizens of the world, use critical thinking skills, and are lifelong learners." And I would like to say that the district did prepare me for that. I'm now a Eastern graduate, and I work in the office of the Honorable Judge James Plagus at the 35th District Court. I wanted my voice to be heard because I think that this name change is, like I said, just, it's very upsetting. And the longer I sat through this meeting, the longer that I kind of stewed over it. I sent Cam a very long personal message as he asked me for my input, and I'm going to read a small excerpt from that email. "Indian pride never dies." And by the way, the word Indian is not discriminatory or racist in any way toward any Native American person that I personally know or am related to. "Natives from all tribes are proud of our history, our struggles, and most of all, our perseverance. States, cities, schools, sports teams, that all have the honor of having Native American or Indian names or are influenced by Native American or Indian cultures, such as the Chiefs, pay homage to our roots. They do not offend, criticize, disrespect Native American Indians or cultures or values." The idea that non-natives, individuals who carry no Native blood and no generational ties, hurt, or traumas, it's truly disrespectful, detrimental, and very hurtful to our future generations. During my time at PCCS, a big part of our history, culture, and education in elementary school, middle school, and high school was learning about the Native American history. And I think that it's truly a shame that the arrowhead has been removed and that any of this would be taking place without any input from Native Americans in our state and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all that I have for Citizens' Comments forums. We will now move up to the follow-up board discussions. I don't see any in here. Do we have any done there about last night? We do not have any, that's it. All right. Since there is no other agenda item or discussion item, I would like to call the meeting to adjournment, but before I do, I want to say good luck to the students that are doing their one last day of finals and wish everyone... last day of finals and wish everyone a restful and safe and enjoyable summer. So, thank you. We conclude or we adjourn at 9 o'clock?